I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the solving city council for September the 11th, 2017.
Councilmember Jameson?
Here.
Tucson?
Here.
Zimmerman?
President.
Mayor Richardson?
Here. I am for the pledge. This is Jameson's reason to pledge.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we're founded, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager.
Just an informational update to remind everyone that Danish Days is coming this weekend. Starting Thursday morning, we'll have some closures and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday, come out for the festivities.
Remember the parade Friday night. Public communications written in verbal, this time please bear comments to the city council regarding the consent calendar items or matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers limited to five minutes. I have a stack of speaker slips that probably at five minutes of these is going to take a long time, so I'm going to drop it back to three minutes because of that. So the public comment time will be three minutes. Tracy Burke here. Followed by Tracy.
I wanted to let everyone know that we had done our first campaign ad for our business community, eight pages in the Business Pride, and we were very happy and it got great response and great reviews. We just did our merchant walk for our Danish Days windows. We have 17 people that are signed up for that right now and more to come. We did our merchant display class last week and we had 12 people that hopefully will get their windows changed up. We're redoing our professional guides for our business expo and our business directory is out and being sold right now. And our walk shop, Wine and Wine Map, is being redesigned at this time and we're getting rid of the dots. So that's all I have on that one. My three minutes is done there. I can talk quick. Now, this is on the TRCs. We would very much like city council to take a look at our TRCs, our zoning ordinance for where our businesses are at and somewhat on our, all of our overall businesses where I'm located at, I am not necessarily tourism. Many of our other businesses aren't. We would like to have a more updated businesses. And it is really within the medical, things are considered medical but they're not, such as acupuncture, rapeka, yoga, energy, healing entities, holistic home therapy, and they're all on second floors and they can't be rented because they are not considered within the TRCs for tourism. And that, I don't think is necessarily true. A lot of these businesses do attract tourism business and they have a nice following that they've come down from Santa Cruz, different areas, and they're not able to get a business license after they join the chamber. So we'd like to have a look at that with our city council people and put it on the agenda for another time to be looked at, and we are working with Holly and we want to work with our city to do this.
Can we get a nod to put that on the agenda, some future agenda? You got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Fred Koval. Followed by Brian Cheney.
Remembering September the 11th, 2001. Fred Koval, resident solving. Good evening, mayor and city council members. All right, give you a little personal history of 9/11. There was seven buildings, WTC, World Trade Center, 1 through 7. The first two I was associated with, only because I was there on an assignment in New York City. My assignment was at Kennedy Airport. I was there from September of '69 to December of '71. During that time, the two tallest buildings, 110 feet, excuse me, 110 stories. The first one, WTC 1, a taller one because it had an antenna on it, was started in August of '68 and completed in December '70. The second one was January '69, completed in July of '71. It just so happens that my landlord lived in one of the apartments that was built to house employees for the World Trade Center. And I visited him every now and then, and he took me by the buildings, showed me what they were like. They were not open then yet because they were still in that construction phase, but I got to see them up close on all, all the sides. He drove me around. But I remember every part of that. My assignment was really good at Kennedy Airport. I enjoyed my time there. I actually flew my little airplane over Kennedy Airport, right across the center of the runways with permission, and also drove around the World Trade Center at the proper distance away. I have a lot of good pictures for memories. So, all I can say is with all of what's occurring right now, we're overwhelmed. It just seems like, I don't think I've seen much in the paper about it. After 16 years, it just seems like it's completely forgotten. When al Qaeda, al Qaeda flew two 767s, one through each of the towers. And will we ever really remember? I know the youngest generation today, my grandkids, have no idea what that means. Thank you, Fred.
Brian Cheney?
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm going to do my famous San Luis Reservoir Report. And from the spill in March 9th, it's down 17 feet right now, so odds are it's going to spill again this year. I also, at this time, like to thank Joni and Dave Jameson for giving me inspiration for running for city council. And thanks, Jon. And there's kind of a thing that's been, I've asked city council, I've asked planning director over the years, is how was the land to be painted and accepted under the TRC regulations? When I was the chairman of the BAR for five years, there were 30 buildings plus, they were mandatory, and it is mandatory in the TRC, to upheld the half-timering contrast slip. And I have to ask this council now, why? Why one building? How was it allowed? I mean, I could sit there, if anybody would like to know the buildings, I can give them a list. Anybody? The Holiday Inn Express, the Chrome Oregon, Hattie's House, Hotel Court, get a Denmark, all the Skip Mesa homes, 20-plus, they were mandatory by Rose and Henry Skip. David Bowen's four-plex on Copenhagen, the Touch Chinese Restaurant, the Chair on Al Sal, solving city bathroom, solving city fire station that was just done. These are traditional doors, just done. Why? Why the landscape?
Thank you, Brian. I don't have any of the speaker slips for the general comment time. Does anybody else wish to speak? Come forward, state your name, please.
I have one in there.
For general comment?
Yes, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I must have shuffled it away.
Didn't have your nap today, did you?
Actually, this is slightly out of order because this actually deals with item number 10 on your list.
Yeah, I do have item 10 here.
Yes, but I want to have that item removed from the agenda tonight. I am the owner of the property. I have, a private party has tendered an offer on last Friday. I have tendered a counter offer at this time, so it's, at this time, that piece of property is not currently available.
Okay, well, when we come to the closed agenda presented, look out there. Thank you, Ed. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Yes.
State your name, please.
Mike Cavendish.
I guess I don't have speakers, but...
He turned one in.
I turned it in.
For item 7. We're not on 7.
General public comment. Anybody else wish to speak?
Yes.
Please.
I do have a speaker slip in to address the closed session, so obviously that's not open to a public comment during that.
Well, we will have public comments prior to going into the closed session.
Understood.
Yeah.
And I did want to just share, thank you for, you know, certainly your service, you being here, mayor, city council, and I did notice you do have a sheriff's deputy here tonight. I'm sure that's not on my count, I'm sure that, you know, it's just for some other reason.
He has nothing else to do.
You know, tonight, there are several employees of the city present here. We are in the impasse procedure, moving through those steps, and I know some of them are prepared to speak. And just speaking for them, I do want to share that, you know, they're here on their behalf, they're here because they're concerned, they are here because they are looking for an environment where they enjoy working, where they are able to take care of their families. The four items that we have on impasse are things that are really key to them, and I'm sure those that will speak will certainly share that with you. And those that don't speak, certainly, I do want to point out that they are here because they are concerned, and you being the city council certainly have an effect on their life, their well-being, and their prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for council comments and requests. Would you like to start? Neil?
I don't want to say anything. I'm happy to be here and happy to see you tonight and look forward to a regular meeting.
All right.
All right, my one item is, I got an email about a removal of a First Street tree. I happen to really like that tree. But I understand it's in front of a new project that might be going on and the tree's health has maybe deteriorated. But what my question is, is down the way, there's actually another tree in the middle of the road, and it's a valley oak, so a more valuable tree. And I noticed that cars seem to be hitting it on a branch that's sticking out. I'm wondering if we can do anything to encourage that tree's health and keep that unique feature there and maybe bring the box out a little bit further on it so trucks stop hitting the trees.
We definitely could take a look at that. And that tree was also looked at, but not, it does not need to be removed. It doesn't need to be removed like the other...
Some water and some feeding.
Yeah, so we can definitely take a look at the overhead clearance on it.
Ms. James?
Even though there wasn't much in the paper, Fred, there's all day on television there are ceremonies going on regarding 9/11. It's a tough day to remember, and you're right, young people don't remember it. They don't know about it. It's in history books now. And since we're all altering what history really is, it'll be interesting to see how they approach it in the written word in our children's history books. I think this is inappropriate, but I'm just putting that on this America.
I just have a couple of comments. We know last Saturday, week ago Saturday, was the national stage. I wanted to commend the fire department and the sheriff's office for their response. They locked on every door in the village and to make sure everybody was safe and not having heat exhaustion. It was a terribly hot day. And it was a transformer failure that caused the problem, and later on, PG&E brought in a non-zero generator to keep the power up. But in the meantime, I want to thank particularly the Schumash Indian Tribe for their unsung contribution of bringing a large bus in with air conditioning on it to help those folks to cool them down. I think it was generous on their part, and they did it without any ceremony, without anything, they just drove the bus. I think it was a good thing that they did. Something else. A general question, what has the sending this valley got to do with the planet Saturn? Well, the spaceship Cassini is ending its 19-year quest to explore Saturn and its moons. Well, in 1997, troop 42 members of the Boy Scout troop sent signatures to JPL to be digitally encoded on a DVD which was attached to Cassini. In 10 days, those signatures will be toast. So it's just something that the Boy Scouts did and it's something that I think we ought to recognize, that they have an impact. Another comment I have is, you know, lately, the last months, the city council's been adjourning late, and it's, and I can attribute it to two or three different causes, but what I want to bring back to the council to consider is to change the start date, start time of the council meeting. Several years ago, we went from starting at 7:00 to starting at 6:30. I'd like to see us start at 6:00 or 5:30 even, or in conjunction with that, to have the closed session at the beginning of the meeting, maybe a half an hour earlier than the start of the meeting. And then, and then I also wanted to change the public comment time to three minutes. Five minutes is becoming something that drags on and on and on in the evening, and it would conform with the rest of the cities and the council and the counties if we had a three-minute term. So I'd like to bring those items back to the agenda for it to consider. Can I get a nod?
Talk about it.
So we can talk about it then, right? Yeah, okay. And then tonight, most of you are here because of our vacancy. I want to outline a couple of items on it.
The state law requires that when there's a council vacancy for the council to appoint a replacement or go to a special election. The council, in its infinite wisdom, in 2009, has established a protocol on how to handle that particular item. So we're going to consider that first during that thing, and then we'll consider other appointment options if that option should fail. And we won't be taking any resumes tonight, or we're not, we're going to ask you not to speak on your desire to be on the council, but at some future time when we approve of the council appointment process, we'll be asking for resumes and applications to be turned in before the next council meeting package is generated, which will be a week from Tuesday if we agree to it tonight. And then, on the following meeting of that one, at that meeting, we'll ask for interviews and we'll review the applicants. And then, the following meeting, which will be the first meeting in October if everything goes that way, we would vote on which item is to who review the council.
With that, I have no other comments. All right, now we go to the approval of the agenda as presented. We want to delete item 10. Can I have a motion? Any other, are there any other changes?
I salute.
Angela Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second in all its favor. The change, I pass. Four to go. The city council amendments of August 28th, are there any additional?
May I interrupt you for just a minute? Script number three.
Oh, we did, didn't we? Correspondence.
And we have it now.
We have some correspondence. We have the letter from Tracy Burke regarding her presentation this evening on the ordinance amendment. We have a letter from Hans Deuce regarding replacement of council. We have a letter from Mayor Peterson regarding replacement of council. Is there any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, then we're going to write.
I don't have any script.
Or, yeah, we do have some.
And then there's a whole, the whole packet that...
Yeah, let me get that.
I did not get the packet.
We have, we have one from Lana Clark. Hans Deuce. Robert Clark. Kim Jensen. Kim Jensen.
In the board.
And Hans Deuce. Is there any discussion? Motion. Okay, with that, now we'll go to the council amendments of August 28th, the addictions, corrections, and deletions of those minutes. Not going to have a motion accepting.
I'll move to accept.
I'll second.
We've moved in second in all its favor, say aye. All right, aye, 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 aye. Pass. Onto the regular agenda, item 7. I have a note here on that. What about, um, six?
Consent agenda six.
Oh, boy, yeah. Does anybody want to pull any of the items on the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull the warrants.
All right, anything else you want. All right, would you please read that, item?
Consent and consent agenda item 6B, approval of warrant registration.
All right, comments? All right, so I guess about the Disneyland rides. How do we get reimbursed for that?
If you go on one of our sponsored trips through the rec department, that's what those are for.
Okay, so we get paid back for the...
No, that's to pay for the people that they, they buy the ticket to go in. I mean, so they sign up for the trip and we take them down in our rec bus to Disneyland.
Okay. And then, what's the 18,000 for the TSS meters for SBR tanks?
TSS is total suspended solid, those are the meters for the tanks.
Is this like a wear and tear item that has to be replaced every year?
I can't tell how long, how often it's a new meter on it, yeah.
Okay. And then also, I noticed there's something for the T1 line, 855, but it's for May, June, July, and then I think I saw another one for, like, all of a sudden, four payments going through. I'm wondering what's, what's that about? And have we ever reviewed our communications bills to see if there's maybe a more cost-effective way of doing this? Yeah, we are. It seemed like there's frontier, yeah.
Yeah, we have duplicate services on our...
Podcast, T1, and we add all these things up, it's just so much money every month.
We think it's a redundancy, so if one, if another goes out, I mean, we do, we haven't reviewed them probably in over a year, but that was the basis of why you have duplicate. On the multiple month, I'd have to look at that one, I don't have in front of me.
Okay, and when was the last time they were reviewed?
I think last year we added the second one, the, maybe a year and a half ago, we added a duplicate internet service.
Oh, on the insurance policy, 20,000, does that cover like all of our operational equipment, like utilities and pumps, valves, pipes, infrastructure?
I see Sandra coming up out of the corner of my eye. Hopefully she has that.
It was just for pollution.
Yeah, I think that was our pollution coverage. We have multiple policies, but...
So this is just for the pollution?
Can you tell me which item it is? Because it's not the pollution, that one's much cheaper.
No. It says all risk prop insurance policies, all risk property insurance.
1085.
JPA, page 28.
Actually, it's 26 on the hard copy. Page 26 on the hard copy?
Yeah, all risk property.
1085, three different numbers.
Most likely that's our crime insurance and property liability insurance.
So if somebody slips and falls in City Hall, that covers, if someone crashes in the bill and it covers damage, it would not be like a home warranty policy that covers equipment on the inside from wear and tear.
Okay, so this is not like the mechanical policy or...
No.
Okay. And then the next one was, it seems like I've seen M&amp;S several times, and in this one, it's for 8,000. What's that project for?
I'll have to ask them out, that was usually the...
Yeah, they do most of our stormwater education.
So, for stormwater?
Stormwater education, our stormwater permit.
Okay. And then, what's the check going to the city of Long Hope Finance Department for the Wine Country Express?
That's our share of the bus that runs from Long Hope to here, we split that. Beelton, the county, and us.
Okay. And then, oh, I noticed there's like a lot of postage and printing. Is there anything you can do to take advantage of our online utility bills to reduce paper and postage?
Well, we do have online utility bills, and we encourage people to sign up for those already, and know them as much as we can. So we've made an effort and a push, we tend to remind people as much as we can to sign up.
Do we put reminders when we send them out to his...
We do periodically.
And what's the traction rate on it?
It's growing. It's not a huge number, but there are a lot of people getting the bills, we know how many of those are for.
They're laminating, it's...
But the postage, the holidays, too, all the checks we send out.
Right, yeah, it has to have a mix.
So it's, yeah.
Yeah. And then the doors, it's like they're now over 25,000 and climbing, like, why I added it all up, it's like a 28,000 now, is that, are these things, are we done now?
Matt's standing right there, I think that was the final payment, but...
All right.
That amount hasn't changed from the bid.
It was 25,000 originally.
I think, Jesus Christ. I think in the, in the last year's budget, we had put in 25,000 as just like a placeholder because the work was going to span both fiscal years. So the bids were 28,000, but we knew part of that work was going to be for fiscal years, so last year's budget, we did a budget adjustment, but...
Got it. And then I'm seeing we have three meter charges going out. We got one for 900 Almopetado, 1890, and then another one for Almopetado. We add all these things up, and it's like 6,500 a month. Is there anything we can do to...
Those are your two fixed charges with ID1 for interconnect. The other one is for Sunny Fields Park. We're actually a customer of ID1 at Sunny Fields Park.
Yeah, so there's a larger meter and a small meter on Almopetado.
Is that where we get Sunny Fields on our own system?
Yeah, that's actually something that's had kind of in the back of our mind. We do, the city does now have an easement. We got an easement about a year and a half ago along the side yard of Holman Creek Side, so we could do a, we could bore a service from Coleman Avenue to that, you know...
Would there be an ROI on doing that? Excuse me? Would there be a return on investment?
We'd have to look at the numbers on that.
Yeah, yeah, there would.
There were, okay.
Yeah, we'd have, like...
1,500 a month is a lot to keep chucking out the door. The next one was, there's a human resources assistance, Mary Unria, which I thought she was retired from the city, but there's a check going out to her. What's, what's that for?
She was brought into the rights and assistance press while we're recruiting for the HR specialist position.
Got it. And then, let's see, oh, PJ&E, $46,000. That seems a little high. I mean, it seems like there's three meters on, is that...
Well, it's not just three meters yet. We have streetlights, we have probably 60 PG&E accounts, I guess, off the top of my head. The big user are the wastewater plant with the de-dentification, running those blowers more. That bill has increased. I think we talked about that before. But, yeah, we have probably 50 accounts with PG&E.
A couple of other big PG&E bills are associated with our wells, because they're high, very high-powered.
Okay. And water wells and, why is there another 6,000 going out?
We've been holding that, that's their last payment. We just finished the connection fee corrections that they were making to that report, and I think you and I talked about that report needing some tweaking on the connection. connection fee, so I've been holding off their final payment on that.
For the connection fee?
You remember they did three, they did the water, three different studies.
Okay. But this is the final? All right. And then, um, okay, I think that's it. I guess the only issue I have is with Bartle Wells. We spent an incredible amount of time on their studies and found just insane mistakes. Um, the, the water and sewer rate study was a disaster. And then I have here that staff even caught a mathematical error in the stormwater technical funding memo that was from them as well. I, I don't like paying for the lack of performance, I guess is what I'm saying. In fact, I, I think they need to pay us back for the study entirely. And that's my standpoint.
I have a question on that comment. The invoice, is it broken down into stages and have we paid them for the bad study?
Well, this was their, this was their final payment, they actually billed us, I think, for nine thousand, and I think there also was left, and the contract was six, I think is what the payment was for.
We could buy two new sets of doors. The way it's written is all fifteen hundred and one...
Yeah, it was an agreed-to contract for those three. We didn't think anything over what that agreed-to contract was, even though they expended more according to their billings, but we didn't pay any more than the contract value.
Well, I'd like to make the motion to accept the warrants, uh, not including Bartle Wells.
Well, at least the check's already gone out, right? Another check goes out tomorrow. Well, then that's, if you get a second, then...
I'll second it. It's removed and seconded. Would you repeat your motion?
Motion is to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the Bartle Wells invoice.
That's the six thousand dollar Bartle Wells payment. That's the motion, would you call a vote, please?
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Jamison?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
No. No action. Thank you. Okay. Uh, that's, that was item A on the consent agenda, so we need to vote, only item B, so we need to, uh, vote on receiving the file for the first quarter report. Uh, we can take the voice vote on that, but kind of, I have a motion on six A. I'll move six A, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passed.
May I have a point of order on your previous here? If that's the two-two vote?
He doesn't get a point of order.
Yes and no? Then it fails. You didn't approve the warrant.
It's a fact. But we did, the, the warrant has, has motioned, so we didn't approve the motion.
Yeah, but you didn't, yeah, so then you got another motion.
That's, that's correct, but there's no such thing as a point of order from the audience at a city council meeting.
But it's true.
All right, all right, listen, would you, uh, we, we'll just have another motion then on six, six B to, uh, cover the, uh, approval of the warrant register. Can I have a motion for that? I'll make the most approval of, uh, is there a second? You know, uh, Rosenberg rules a lot that we don't have to have a second for a motion, to complete a motion to vote on it. Uh, so on that being the case, I'm, I'm going to invoke that rule and, uh, we'll take a rule call vote, please.
So now what are we voting on?
It doesn't have, a, a motion doesn't have to have a second.
Approval of the warrants, approval of the warrants.
Approval of six, uh, six B. We'll call vote.
Councilmember Jamison?
I'm approving the warrants.
You're approving the?
Yes.
The warrant.
Tucson?
No.
Zimmerman?
Can we just look at our options that we have with, uh, with that one item, so we can get a good...
We're subject to the credit rating. We aren't going to pay our bills.
Yeah, we're going to use them. That was about the worst reason report we've ever, I'm asking it horrible.
Why are we aiming for lack of performance?
Can we have these questioned or, or look at it?
Yeah, believe, we, we would not use them again based on that experience. Staff would not be recommending a contract with Bartle Wells after our experience.
What about a firm letter to them, would they know we're not going to pay?
Uh, that's up to the council to give me that direction.
Would it be possible for you to take them offline and indicate to them our displeasure for their performance?
I can definitely do that.
Fund of some type? Would that be possible?
If directed, I can do that, yes.
Can we assign you that tab? Thank you, okay. Now can I have a continuing of the vote?
So what are we continuing to vote on?
I'm going to make a little note.
No, I think we need to do, redo the motion.
The motion is to accept the, uh, the, uh, item six B, the approval of the warrant register.
With the exception?
No exception.
But you don't, we don't want to pay you, no, that's not what we're saying.
Was a credit from Bartle Wells.
If, if you approved the warrant...
If we approved the warrant register...
Then they're going to get it, but they're putting in the mail as well.
Yeah.
The city manager will negotiate with them, if they're sending the government.
Then we need to change the motion.
They need to change the motion.
May we just need to bring this up on the, uh, the Bartle Wells issue on the next meeting agenda to discuss?
I, I might just interject, I, normally I try and avoid that, cause I don't have a vote in. Um, but i- if you actually want to be able, your city may have any ability to negotiate at all, it would be better to approve the, the warrant register with the exception of the Bartle Wells warrant, uh, then he could proceed with paying all the rest of the bill. He would be able to tell Bartles and Wells, your warrant was not approved.
And can we call the previous motion in the field because of that?
It's your meeting, yes.
Okay. Then, then, uh, we're going to put a hold on that, on the last motion and recall the first motion, which was pay the, pay the, uh, warrant register with the exception of Bartle, Bartle Wells, well, six thousand dollars.
They're two losses.
That's a recall motion, so now we have to recall the vote on that motion.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Uh, yes. You got there. Okay. On item seven, I wanted, I wanted to, uh, lay out some of the ground rules for item seven. Uh, the clerk's going to read the item, the city manager's going to do a staff report. Then, uh, we will follow that staff report with discussing the two thousand and nine protocol for, uh, replacement of a council member. There'll be a public, there'll be a motion before we take it to the public for public comment. The public comment will be on that specific motion, whether or not to accept, uh, the two thousand and nine protocol. After the public comment, we'll come, bring it back to the council for council discussion and vote. In the event the motion fails, then we'll, we'll discuss the other, other appointment options and, and notice, and notice the vacancy if it's passed. By noticing the vacancy, I, I, what I mean is, is that we will, uh, oppose the fact that we're, we're applying, we're asking for, uh, for resumes and application to replace the, uh, departed council member. And with that, uh, then we'll, then we will ask for a public comment on that particular item, and then we'll vote on that, and if that vote fails, we'll discuss the, uh, special election possibility. So in effect, we're tri- we're, uh, trilocating this, this item to the protocol, to, uh, other appointment options, to special election possibility. So with that, will you read the, read the agenda?
Item seven, city council vacancy.
Mister Mayor, members of the council, at the August twenty-eighth, uh, twenty seventeen city council meeting, councilmember Deuce announces resignation due to him relocating to Santa Maria. The California government, government code addresses vacancies for cities in California, and that code section in, uh, in pertinent part, as follows, if a vacancy occurs in an elected office, the council shall within sixty days from the commencement of the vacancy either fill the vacancy by appointment or call a special election to fill the vacancy. Uh, in two thousand and nine, the city council established a protocol for filling city council vacancies and added it to the city council's adopted protocols. The process was as follows. Filling vacancies, if any vacancy should occur for any reason, the position is offered to the runner-up from the last election. If that individual declined, council would offer the position to the second runner-up if the electoral vote was within one and a half percent between the two. Uh, if either option is not successful, the council would then select through the application process. Prior to establishment of that protocol, in, in two thousand and eight, when one of the vacancy occurred, the city used the application process, and ultimately, at that time, the candidate with the next highest votes was selected to compete, uh, complete the vacant term of office. Back in two thousand and eight, we did a research on a special election, and, um, for the county to run it, because the city doesn't have the ability to do that, it would have cost about thirty thousand dollars, and then if we did a mail-in ballot, it was around twenty thousand, so those are just some numbers to keep in the back of your mind as you potentially pursue a special election. Uh, it is important, because of the, when the council member, uh, vacancy occurred, that the government code is specific that if you do an appointment, that position will only fill, uh, to the next election. So in twenty eighteen, we would have a two-year seat, a two-year seat for mayor, a two-year seat for council, and then two full-year terms for, for city council in, in the twenty-eighteen election. So, um, your alternatives would be to follow the protocol and offer the position to the next candidate, which is Karen Wade. She has agreed to accept the position if it is offered. She did notify staff and indicate that she was going to be out of state, uh, tonight, but was very interested in, in accepting the position. Two would be to not follow the protocols and begin an application process to fill vacancy. This process would need to be completed, and a new member, council member would need to be selected within sixty days to meet the government code, and that would be by October twenty-seventh. The third would be to call for a special election, and that must be held on the next regularly scheduled election date, not less than one hundred and fourteen days from the call of the special election. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. So we're going to, uh, discuss all, continue number one, follow the protocols and offer the position to the next candidate, and can we have some discussion from the diocese? Any questions?
Are we taking public comment first, or are we going on?
No, we're going, we're going to make a motion on this particular item, then go to public comment, then come back and vote on it. So is there any discussion?
Why would we make a motion?
Well, because, because we have three alternatives, so we're going to trilocate them, we're going to work one after the other.
Why?
To keep, to keep an orderly process, that's why. So right now, we're going to discuss the two thousand and eight protocol. There's no discussion, I'll ask for a motion to, uh, do both two thousand and eight protocol.
Well, I'd like to make the comment. Back in two thousand and eight?
No, it's two thousand, two thousand and nine, I'm sorry.
No, two thousand and eight, this is when it all started. Uh, there was a situation where the present mayor was a council person, and he ran for the mayor's position, and he won, which vacated his seat on the council. Nobody, according to the, uh, there wasn't, um, a way to have more people run for that seat, because we didn't know if he was going to win or not, so the, the council seats were only limited to one seat at that point in time. Only one person ran?
Uh, there, there was, um, councilmember Deuce, I believe, was elected that year for his term, and then Jim was elected for a two-year term.
Right, but there was only one council seat, uh?
Yeah, that was a one-year seat, yeah.
And then when the mayor vacated his council seat to become mayor, then it vacated a council seat. And there was no mechanism, no protocol, no rules and regulations, policy to implement this in a nice, easy way. It became extremely contentious. It was not a pretty picture. Unbeknownst to me, I threw my application in, thinking that this was a good time to maybe tip my toe into becoming a participant in the city. And I walk into this room, and I go, oh my gosh, I want, I don't want to do this, I want to take my application back, because there was a lot of controversy about who was going to be selling that seat. They eventually voted to have the next person in line take the council seat. Then, one of the other council members resigned, and I'm not sure when we did the, um, two thousand and nine policy, was it right after the person had been appointed, or was it later?
Uh, it seems to me it was about three or four months later.
Three or four months, but it was before Susan, Linda Jackson retired?
Yes, yes, yes.
So at that time, the same people, some of the same people that had applied first go around, but there had somebody running. And that seemed to us really, they chose somebody to, to fill the seat, and we moved on with it. This is the binder that we are given when we come and are seated on the council. Probably seven, eighth is protocol and policy. And the policy is the larger area, the protocol is the smaller area, but the part about assigning who should fill the vacancy is also included in policy. We are a governmental agency, runs on rules and regulations. We don't hate to choose what we want to do and what we don't want to do. We need to follow what our rules tell us to do. And our rules tell us, at this point in time, that the next person in line, who put her neck out there, ran for election, the public liked her enough to have her follow very closely behind Hans Deuce. Ryan was the first, Hans was the second, and then Karen was the third by just a few votes, I think it was like five votes. So that was an edict from the city saying, we like these three people. There was a fourth person, but he was way down at the bottom. So in order for me to feel good about this situation, I implored the council to appoint the next person in line. I think we need to follow our rules and regulations, we need to follow our protocol. The policies and the protocols were all adopted during public hearings, that all of you could come to, all of you could have a say in if you didn't like that one, that was the time to do it. This is not the time to do it. After we appoint this person, and if we want to revisit some of our policies and protocols, that's the time to do it, but not now.
Any other questions? Please. No applauding, no booing.
But thank you, they're in right.
That was well said. I guess two of that handles isn't here anymore. But the one thing that I cannot, uh, that doesn't sit well with me is unilateral, unilateral power, and for a seated, uh, person on this council to go ahead and then appoint an elected seat is unconstitutional. I don't care, the runner-up, this or that, it's a year gone by, and a lot has happened within the city, um, a lot of, a lot has happened in all of our personal lives. And to go ahead and think that next time when I run, I can go ahead and have two friends run, and then maybe they get, uh, I'm the runner-up, and they get the seat, and then they resign and I get their seat, because, um, I could just, you know, run five campaigns at once if I wanted. Uh, I think it's horrible policy, I don't know how, here to the city. And there's no way you're going to give me the bug from special election. We're going to let the people vote and give them the choice and not consume and press power. I'll just stop there for now.
Any other comments? There's no comment.
I have to say, I, I kind of come from a little bit different perspective, and, um, I, I hate to lose an opportunity to, uh, lose the community involvement, and, you know, it's, it's pretty rare that we see a... And, you know, it's pretty rare that we see a like this. And it's clearly a subject that everyone's very interested in. You know, I see, the way I see it, the more the merrier, and that's not only true for our holidays. So I'd like to hear from everyone that's interested. I'd hate to just, I feel like right now, we're just rejecting them. You can't even speak tonight. We're not even hearing from the public on the item.
We'll hear from the public after the motion.
Well, if that's where we're going to run it, then...
The idea is to keep the thing in an orderly progression. The progression is protocols first. Because that's the policy. And in the case, in the case of this particular policy and this particular individual, they did run for office. The public did vote for them. It's not up to one of us that voted, that are overriding the public. The public said, this is what we want, and so we're agreeing, and we're going to implement the protocol.
So is it not a choice?
Not at this point, no. The choice is, yay or nay on the protocol. If it's a nay on the protocol, then we'll go, we'll go to the other vacancy filling option.
So a special election is not considered policy? Policy is that the runner-up gets the seat?
Yes. Then if that, if we fail on that vote, then we'll go to the appointment possibilities of people making applications and applying for the position. If that vote fails, then we'll consider the special election vote. That's in the order of these alternatives. You see that, one, two, and three?
I'll make the motion to deny this one. Can you clarify deny? I think deny...
What, protocol? Well, what he's saying is that he's only going to limit us to one option at a time. So if you accept this one, all of, all of your options are out the door. If you deny it, then we have more time to engage people and the public and discuss this. So the way I see it, the way that this is set up, my options are being denied right now. So therefore, I'm going to deny.
So your motion is not to follow the, not the protocol?
No, it's not.
We moved to the second, did?
I just, I just have a comment. Now, should we just throw this binder away?
Sure.
Should we just throw the policies and the protocols away? That some of these people were a part in making.
That's what we're doing right now.
We want to throw the whole thing away. We're picking and choosing, this is already very political.
We are elected to add, delete, and modify policy. That is what the people have entrusted us with. And there are so many policies that come up through the year that we have to make modifications to. This policy is over ten, it's ten years old now, it seems like? I'm not here just to follow policy, might as well not even have a city council. Because, well, staff, you guys had your binder, just follow the policy. Why am I here?
I'm going to offer a substitute motion. The substitute motion is that we accept the two thousand and nine protocol. Can I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
The last motion that is, that is substituted gets the first vote. Would you call the roll, please?
The first, first motion?
The second motion. The substituted motion is handled first.
Your motion?
Yes, my motion.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jamison?
Yes.
Councilmember Deuce Hong?
No.
Zimmerman?
No. Okay, that indicates no action on this particular item. Now that go to the first motion.
Earlier, you had indicated that go to the, for public comment after the motion before voting, so I would recommend...
Lost my head. Can we back that up?
Well, no, just, there's still a motion on the table, just go to public comment now.
Okay. With that, we have public comment on, just on, I'd like public comment just on this particular motion, that we, we don't follow the two thousand and eight protocol. I got Mark Vincent Fonti, followed by Scott Gate. So just speak upon, speak on this motion, all of us, two minutes, three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm Gaye and Fonti, resident of Solvang and planning commissioner. I do want to speak to you with regard to the protocol. I believe the city council should follow its documented protocol that was established in two thousand and nine for this specific purpose. Secondly, the protocol provides Solvang voters with a voice in the process. As is our right, we should be the ones electing our governing representatives. I don't believe we should appoint anybody in this for this vacant seat, particularly since Karen Wade, who was the first runner-up, received twenty-nine point three-three percent of the vote as compared to Hans Deuce's twenty-nine point four-five, which is less than zero point four percent fewer votes, a virtual high with Hans Deuce obtaining the seat that he has now vacated. Any other approach to filling the seat other than an expensive special election would deny the public the right to elect their representative to fill this vacant seat. We've already voted for Karen, who was a well-qualified candidate with excellent record of public service in both elected and appointed positions. In addition, Mr. Mayor, you commented at the last city council meeting that the council could use additional financial expertise. You need look no further than Karen Wade, who as a securities analyst, has analyzed countless financial statements and related financial records. She will bring that value and use that expertise to this council when awarded the vacant seat. Again, I urge the council to follow its protocol and award the vacant seat to Karen Wade.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mark Infanti. I'm speaking both as a resident of Solvang and a member of the Board of Architectural Review. I'm here to make two requests to the city council. One is I agree with the city council protocol that it should be followed. There's a couple of reasons for that. One of them was covered, she was voted for, and it means the populace basically thinks that she is the one that would be the next best qualified of the ones that ran at the town. She presented her views in a public forum against the other candidates, and those views haven't changed. She has been working on the board with me for the last three years, Board of Architectural Review, so I've had a chance to watch Karen perform. And I think she performs very well. She carefully studies the package she gets, she makes those decisions in a timely manner that we are obliged to, to make as members of the board. And the other thing about it is, I don't always agree with Karen. I'm not surprised. But the one thing about Karen is, because she does this work in advance, and she does study the material, substantiate her position, and being able to explain why you as a public servant need to, or want to make a decision, I think is important as a public servant. The second thing I'd like to ask you is because of, since the obvious choice is put Karen into that position, that's going to put an opening on the bar. Also, when Hans did declare that he was leaving, he also acknowledged that Carla, his wife, was going to leave the BAR. That leaves two positions open on the bar. The comment was made, why did we get the Landsby? That was because there was only three people available at that point in time. One of them worked for the Landsby, and there was a vote. So issues happen when there's only three, and so I'm going to ask you to quickly replace the people for those two vacant positions. There are two people that I know of and personally would represent as being effective in that position, Mrs. Susan Williams and Mr. Patrick Kavanaugh. But I would make a motion quickly to fill those positions.
Thank you, Mark.
Ed Skid, citizen of Solvang, formerly on the city council. I was involved in the discussion of, I'll call it the robust discussion of the two thousand and eight, discussion of filling your space from councilman to mayor. It was a very contentious situation, and nothing really was, would have gotten done if Mr. Deuce at the time changed his vote from one to the other side. To Karen Wade, and as we discussed that, we ended up coming up with the protocol of having the next person in line be requested to fill the position of any vacancy on the city council. Coming up to Karen Wade's position, as has been mentioned before, she was only lost by four to five votes in this particular election, extremely close. By following our protocols, that is what we have set the protocols up for. Mr. Ryan Deuce has said, well, we change the, we don't, we aren't supposed to change the protocols every time something comes up that we don't like. We have set the protocols to go in and choose a person who has, actually, she has gone out, she has run for the position, she put her name out there. We're now looking at coming up with a suggestion of opening it up to the public. As far as I'm concerned, if somebody is really interested in running, they should have run in the last election and put their name out there. There are four people, there are a small number who ran. There's a number of people now saying we should go out and appoint somebody else, and we don't know what their qualifications are. If you don't like Karen Wade, the way she handles the job, she's only going to be in there for, the next election for city council is approximately fourteen months away. It's, she is not going to be filling out the full four-year term of Mr. Deuce. She is going to be filling out a term to the next general election, at which time there will be another individual elected to fill in for a two-year term to get the rotation back to a proper manner where we have two city council members elected and the city mayor elected. As for going for a special election, Mr. Zimmerman has always been one of the individuals who's been very conscientious in trying to save the city money. Going out and having a special election does not save the city money. And for, particularly for a term where by the time of having the special election, they are only going to be in office probably less than a year.
Thank you. Mike Cavalliere?
I'm Mike Cavalliere. I've been a resident of Solvang for twenty-five years. My background, I was director of operations at Delco Systems in Santa Barbara. And one of the, within that group, one of the responsibilities was purchasing department, where we bought lots and lots of stuff. And my experience is that when you're filling positions like this, you want to look for the people who have experience, because they are most likely going to, going to provide you with the kind of response you need to do this job. There's more to the job than just whatever, whatever your manual says. You have to have good common sense. And what I found in hiring people and assigning people to different tasks is that a lot of, they have an inherent capability for doing good jobs. And it basically goes with people who have a good understanding of how this is operating, because they know that the business operates only well if they know how to make the right decisions and make money well. So my feeling right now is, when you make a selection for who you want, who you're going to have fill that position, I would recommend that you pick somebody who has a lot of good business experience, making decisions where they spend or invested their own money in that job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Kate Kozlowski?
You're close.
Close, okay.
Kate Kozlowski?
Thank you.
Good evening. I just want you to know, I do live in the city of Solvang, and I am for an expedited process. I voted in this last election for the two vacancies. I really expect there to be five council members. I think we need to have the protocol. I appreciate you explaining the three processes that we could go through, and I think the employment process is most expedient. I would just like to have a full city council that focuses on the issues of the city instead of special elections or a drawn-out process to elect the next city council member for this vacant space. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the deceitful path we... Brett Kovell, Solvang. I'm board mayor and city council members. Look at the door. Read through the, I read through the warrants. I see what the total cost was. And I'd say, you know, you're at two-thirds of the way for a special election if you hadn't replaced that door. So, yeah, you know, I look at, and I'm the only one that attends every meeting, every meeting. I attend like twenty-four meetings or so a year, potential meetings. I've been here at sixteen of them, where nobody else was here, nobody. That was a, pretty close to the... Unless you have special interests, like the budget cuts, or if there's some other matter that thinks that something needs to be responded to, where numbers need to come out for that response. If you, if you look at where we were a year ago, and think about it, the knowledge that people had for running for city council was the knowledge of September, October of last year. It's been a year later, and times have really changed. The water fiasco, wow, was that a big one? And then you start looking at some of the other things along the way, and you just wonder why we have the approach that we have today. Why is it just business as usual? Why doesn't anybody ask the hard questions? And that means do your own homework. Get a second opinion that's not from staff, so you can have due diligence in what you vote to approve on. I've not seen, I've seen special interests, without going into details, but I have a laundry list of details. So, some people have come forward. And the precedents that was set back ten years ago, or more, two thousand and eight, two thousand in time, does not follow today. It's unworkable. So we need a change.
Thank you, Brett. Christie Generous?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. Good to see you guys again. It's Dierness. Think of the J like a Y. Dierness. Sorry about that, every time. Every time. Oh, my goodness. I don't envy you this difficult decision. It's very, I know it's challenging on both sides of the equation here. I respect what you're trying to sit to do and say, and avoid further contention and further expense. But at the same time, this is an amazing opportunity to really expand public awareness and participation. I really agree with that a hundred percent. I've come to a number of council meetings over the last few months, I'm having a ball. I strongly encourage everybody to reconsider this, and actually consider thinking to open up the process and make it more competitive, more... up the process and make it more competitive, more democratic, and more transparent, because this is what councils are about, this is what democracy is about, this is what, you know, getting involved at the local level is all about. So I'm sorry I have to disagree with my fellow residents. I've been a longtime resident of Solvang myself, I've been here for 50 years, off and on. My parents have been here, been participating in the sisterhood, dancing unique. My dads worked in every bakery. I've worked in the bakeries. I graduated from high schools and things. I would have run for city council myself last year, except I was busy in Latin America helping cities down there to build smart cities, build technology parks, and generate more tax revenue for their purposes. So I know how to advise cities. I know how to help them to create revenue. And I think that this is a great opportunity to open up the process, to bring the best possible candidates to the floor, and hopefully allow the city council and the city of Solvang to choose from the best possible pool of candidates, of the most expertise and the most experience. And why would those? Probably, I would love to run. Will I run? Sure, I'll run next year if this opportunity avails itself now. I'd love to take it. But to be honest with you, what we're seeing today is we're facing a whole different set of circumstances than we saw last year. Based on what I've been reading, the city council is facing some tough choices with respect to the pension plan, unfunded liabilities, and this is going to affect the city for a long time. These choices, these decisions that are going to be made in the next 14 months before the next election, they're going to have a real long-term effect. So what we do now, whoever sits in that chair is going to have to be the best possible candidate. So I'm all for opening up the process, at least hearing more voices. Let's go through that process and give the city of Solvang the opportunity to at least find the best candidate for the job. Thanks again.
Thank you, Chris. I have no other speaker slips. Does anyone wish to comment?
Lana Clark, and I did submit a speaker slip, but perhaps it got buried.
It didn't make it there.
Yeah.
Could have.
Okay, thank you. I lived in Solvang for 45 years, and I'm an attorney. And as I hear the discussion, it reminds me that the government code section that was quoted, 36512B, provides two methods to fill the vacancy, and that's either by appointment or calling a special election. That section does make a provision for seating someone who ran in the last election and got the greatest amount of votes. So I raise the question about whether this protocol that was adopted in 2009 is something that is actually valid, because it's contrary to what the government codes says, and I think perhaps you ought to have the city attorney do some research and find out whether it's acceptable for a city council to adopt protocols that violate the government code, which is what governs how the city is supposed to be run. So I have some concerns about that. If you can do this, you can go ahead and disregard anything else in the government code and change it to whatever you want. So I think you have to follow the government code, and that's two options, by appointment or by election. And I think if you're going to do an appointment, that you ought to look at all the people that are interested in being appointed and expand that, so that you do pick the best person for the job, as has been voiced. Thank you.
Thank you, Lana. David?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, David Rasmussen. I would encourage the council to follow the protocol that was put in place a few years ago. We had an election 10 months ago. There was a person that came in third, very, very close to second. Those votes show that that's who the people of Solvang want for this job, and I believe that's who you should appoint for this job. The people have spoken, and I think you should honor their wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Brian?
Since Mark brought it back up, I just thought there was something interesting that I forgot to add first. There were seven total meetings in the BAR for the Lansby. One was before he was in there.
That doesn't relate to our question, right?
No, no, he brought it up though during the last speaker, and I'd just like to add this, is there's two meetings missing off of the website.
Brian, we're talking about this specific motion.
Next week.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion, and who would like to start?
Saving the money for the city is, yes, I do. I try to save as much as we can where we can, but when it comes to liberty and freedom and trust in people, I'm not going to take that away from them. This is not an absentee elective decision, and we're not talking 90 days, 30 days. We just voted, we just got through the election. It's a year plus now, based on when you had to start running your campaign. I really believe that we're taking away the voice of the people. And if the voice is that Karen Waite or whoever the runner-up was, excellent. But at least we have opened it up and elected the position rather than taking the authority to... And I just, I want to encourage a special election.
Brian, any comments? All right, now, Julie?
I think I stated my position, and I'd like to ask the city attorney about what Mr. Mark said.
Well, although there are only two methods, either election or appointment, your protocol's simply a guideline adopted by the council in 2009 about how to go about making an appointment. So it would be perfectly legal to make an appointment by following the protocol.
Any comments? And that was what I was thinking also, is that we're going to make an appointment in the process by which we decided to make the appointment, which we through the protocols. All right, so there's a motion on the floor that says we should not use the... Is there any other comments regarding that?
Sir, what's the motion again?
It was a motion you made.
Oh, okay.
It was a while ago.
And still recovering.
Call roll, please.
Councilmember Toussaint?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Just to clarify, this is to not go the protocol.
Correct.
Yes.
Jamison?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
That vote failed by inaction. So with that, we go through the other alternative selection process. Now, as I said before, we're not going to select anybody tonight. We don't have any applications. We haven't set forth a method by which we can get applications, so can we... Shall we... In order to get the option, I have a motion accepting the fact we'll take the applications for appointment. Shall we do that? Can I have a motion? Should we go ahead with the application, move the application process?
As for move.
Is there a second? A second. It's been moved and seconded. Sorry.
You indicated earlier that before you voted...
That's right. We have to go in the audience. Public, would you like to... The speaker's list is all used up, so I'll ask one at a time. Do you like to speak on this paper item?
Thank you. Ian Fonti again. I am completely against the appointment process. I think the residents of Solvang have a right to vote for the person who wins the seat, and I don't think the person should be appointed, as Neil stated, without an election. So I'm completely against this approach, and if we can't follow the protocol, then I think we should go to a special election. Thank you.
Thank you. Zimper Nelson wishes to speak. Seeing none, call roll, please, on the motion.
Councilmember Jamison? Is that right?
Have a key on the other side. Are we going to go through the application process to fill a vacancy? Resumes and application.
She passed.
Alternative number two.
So if this one fails, then I go to the special.
Then we go to the question of the special.
Not second. The second. Go to the second.
Councilmember Toussaint? Councilmember Zimmerman?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
No.
Motion failed. Does she vote?
No.
Councilmember Jamison? Do you want to repeat the motion? The motion is to accept applications for appointment.
Want to spend $30,000 on election? Yes?
Yes. That was a split vote, two no's and two yeses. No option. All right, on to the third alternative. Third alternative is to call for a special election, which can likely help in making regular established election date from the call of the special election in the discussion. Can I have the motion?
I'll make that motion, and we take this to a special election.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's removed and seconded, recall roll.
I just have a question.
Sure.
I don't think that we even have... Can vote on this. I think it's been decided what we're going to do, that we're going to have a special election, because we could not...
We can vote, but we not have a special election also. And carry this agenda over to the next council meeting.
Yeah, you have... The way the law works, in the absence of an action otherwise, within the 60-day time period, you will go to a special election whether you vote for it or not. But you don't... The 60 days hasn't run. We're only two weeks into it. And I would remind you that you'd indicated earlier that you would go to the comment before you voted on this third motion as well.
Thank you. Before we complete the vote, is there anyone that wishes to speak toward this item of the yes or no on the special election? Brett?
Mayor and city council members, Britt Cogell. This might be a wise alternative, because you have a number of people here tonight that just want the presidents, and you have a number of people here tonight that wants an appointment. You can never satisfy anybody. I found that out after 50 years of marriage. But I did learn one thing. I realized I have to answer to a higher authority. So I always get the last word in. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Heavy on the man. So anyway, I think that that is the best solution. We've heard, let the people decide. Well, let's let the people decide. And maybe that's the way to go. However, as the city attorney has pointed out, why rush it? You've got three more meetings, and you might have a whole new outlook after three more meetings. So just want to keep that in mind. Though I think you can either do that, postpone this motion, or go with it and call for the special election. Thank you for the mail. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark Infante, in a city before, I think the protocol was the best way to go. It makes things happen quicker, we get back on with business and quick... We're not going to do the protocol, I don't like an appointment. That takes it out... As Neil said, that takes it out of the hands of the public. These are the public representatives and need to be elected by the public. So if you're not going to follow the protocol, which I disagree with, then I think you need to hold an election. The problem with that, of course, is you've got a long time before you're going to get somebody elected, and the cost. But I think that's better than an appointment.
Thank you, Marty. Ed?
Back again. I do have one question for staff. We have 60 days to make up our mind, and then we have how many days for the next... When would be the next general election that we would have a special election? What type of... What's the timeframe?
Well, we go to a special election instead of waiting until the next general election. And I'd have to look at it like about, it's at least 110 days or something like that.
100...
130 is the cutoff. I'm talking about time from decisions.
Would that be from... Would that be on top of the 60 days, or would it be 60 plus 70?
No, the time if we call for a special election, there's a separate set of rules from the 130 days that says when you have the special election.
So if we wait...
And that would start from the time that the decision was made.
So if we wait 60 days, okay, that comes to my point, that when Ryan first came on the city council, I think in my going-away speech, I made a comment that at any one time, as a member of the city council, a third of the people think you're doing a fantastic job, a third of the people really don't care, and a third of the people think you are littering idiots. And at any one time, that whole group of people is in flux. Person who thought you were absolutely brilliant one week will think you're an absolute idiot next week. So what we have right now, we have four individuals up here, and I would say a third of the individuals think one or more of you are idiots, a third of them think you're absolutely brilliant, a third really don't give a darn. So now that goes back to now, with that said, with going with a special election, if we go with 60 plus another 100, you're talking 180 days possibly. You're talking six months. You are talking into the month of February of this coming year for a special election for an individual who will be running for reelection approximately eight to 10 months away. I believe the one lady mentioned that she wants to have a full council, so you get things done. Right now, you are having a two-to-two tie on just about everything. I can see that coming up on other items that are equally important to the... What you need to do is make up your mind, get an individual who is highly qualified, and have them come onboard as soon as possible. That person, I feel, is the third-place finisher. As it turned out, she was only, I think, five votes behind. She has been very competent on her job with the Infantes, working on their boards. She knows what's going on. I would say going for a special election would be, you know, as I said before, a waste of money, considering we'll be having to spend money for a special election less than eight months later. I highly recommend that you reject the special election and reconsider option number one, appoint the next-place finisher. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. David?
You had a good demonstration tonight how a even-numbered council works. It doesn't work. We need to fill that empty seat as quickly as we can, so you guys can get to work, do your jobs. And because of that, I think you should follow the protocol. It's the quickest, easiest, fairest way to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. David? Chris?
Well, I'm one of the third that thinks you guys are doing a great job. No, seriously, this is a tough choice. This is what politics is all about. This is what politics is all about, and this is what I admire and respect you all for. This is not an easy job. And I, I'm not, I don't envy the person who actually ends up in that seat. Though I can echo what everyone else is saying. I love what Fred is suggesting. If you guys take some time and think about it over the next couple of weeks, maybe the appointment process is the way to go. Maybe you guys can come together and find a way through this and put somebody that quickly and save yourselves $30,000, about the same price as those doors. So I'm just suggesting, take some time, think this through. But at the same time, I fully agree with Neil and Ryan and some other people who actually would prefer to see a special election. This is what cities are about, this is what democracy is about. I love this about this little town. It's, in, in the bigger scheme of things, you guys are going to be spending millions and millions of dollars on things like unfunded liabilities and unfunded mandates and like I said, $5,000 is a drop in the bucket now. Can Karen Wade do a better job? I would love to challenge her for that opportunity, and I will come up with it next year. Because unfortunately, these, these issues demand serious leadership. And somebody with a professional background, somebody with a business background, this gentleman said over here, I can speak to that, I've been a CEO and a CFO, I've run several businesses and I have five cities across Latin America. Can I do the same here? Probably. Is Karen Wade capable of doing that? I don't know. Let's, let's challenge it, let's find out. Let's see what the rest of the city thinks. Because unfortunately, this is, this is the time, this is the moment, let's do it. Let's make the best choice we can. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Sign, we'll bring it back to the council. We're in the middle of a vote right now, and I believe that, would you, would you please tell us?
The motion is to call a special election. Motion by Neil Zimmerman, second by Councilmember Tucson.
And your vote was a yes. Neil, you were a no?
They haven't voted.
No, there's been no vote.
Oh, you made, you made a yes, you said a no.
No, we haven't voted on the motion. You just took public comment, you haven't voted on the motion yet.
I thought we were in the middle of the vote. Okay.
No, I interrupted faster this time.
That's why we're waiting for Joni's vote.
That was a four.
Okay. Let's start all over.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Special election, yes or no?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jamison?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
I know.
Can we bring this back in here?
That means, that means we have tabled this unless, unless we go back on other, on previous motions. Can we do that? Any of us?
It's your meeting.
It's my meeting.
Well, the council's meeting.
Well, I, I always like to understand that the recall, to recall a motion requires the positive side to recall it.
You don't have, yeah. In this particular case, you have, you've really had no action.
Right, no action, right.
So you can table it till the next meeting, or you can have further discussion if you or the council wants to.
I'd like to see this resolved tonight with, with following the protocol. So let's start it all over.
No, let's not.
Okay, let's not.
Let's not.
Okay, then we'll table this until the next meeting. On to item eight, thank you very much. Do the salutation of the agenda.
Item eight, utility box art program.
I want to give people a chance to read what they want to.
We'll take a minute break. Be back, make it photographed by the court.
So you don't have your pictures on here, you say? People don't have the package, they won't see the picture. You lost one of them. You lost Joni, but you gained Ed. You gained Ed and lost Joni.
No.
Can we hear her?
No. I'm not, I'm not going to hear that one.
I'll call a meeting back to order. There's been a slight change in the agenda, and I, it's only because we respect and appreciate the employees of the city. And we don't want them to stay up late at night because tomorrow will ruin their performance. And besides, they're not getting paid overtime. So, on the basis of that, I'm going to change the public comment on four item numbered closed session, and let, let those employees speak in the closed session, and then we'll be out of turn. At least you'll have your word, and then, and then you don't have to stay for, for the beginning of the closed session. And then that will start with Fred Koval. This is the closed session, public commentary.
I'm the only guy?
No, you got some more people behind you.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know anything, except I know one thing. And that is, from my observations of attending every council meeting and seeing what's been, you have gone faced with, where you, where you're going to go. And you look at all of the costs, and it's unbelievable. As an engineer, I did one simple calculation, back of an envelope. And that is, where are things going to be? With the compounding? The expenditure of the compounding? Where's it going to go? If you do it over ten years, you're going to have a 72% increase. And that's excluding anything that you, in the way of additional increases for the Sheriff's Department. So, when you see where this all is, you're on a collision course. And a collision course is rapidly accelerating your expenses to exceed your revenues. And you won't be able to tax your way out of it. You can't raise the TOT, you can't raise the water and sewer rates, you can't raise the sales tax to even stay up. That's my observation. And you have a choice to make. A very important choice.
Thank you, Fred. I want to step back a quick second and explain that we're, we're doing the, the public comment period for the closed session, which is, with labor negotiators, we're doing that in closed session. So, next, Chris Rivera.
I'm just going to address the issue very briefly again. My name is Lynn Swenson, I'm the coordinator. I know the last time I was here, not all the council members were here, but mayor, city council. There are numerous employees here tonight. Some of them did leave, they came with their children, their families, because with them it is a matter of, of life, of the environment here at the city. And for them to bring their children, at least they got an exposure to the city council meeting. Myself, I go to a lot of city council meetings, Santa Luis, Santa Barbara, La La Poc, Santa Maria. You know, being here till midnight's not a problem for me, but I really appreciate those employees that were here tonight, and certainly what they have to say is coming from their heart and very sincere. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Is there anyone else from the, from the speaking room? So, so, John. Nicholas Rivera?
Yes, sir. My name is Nicholas Rivera, and I worked for the city in the wastewater division for five years now. I also grew up in the valley, went to high school here, graduated here, and have lived here pretty much my entire life. I want to thank the mayor and city council for considering the concerns of the employees for the city, in the city tonight. I addressed the council tonight because I desire to remain working at the city in a positive environment. The items before you under the impasse procedure are important, and I and my fellow workers share those items with you through the union and your legal counsel. We do not approach you lightly, but with a determination and a single effort to move forward. I ask you to consider those needs, for me as an employee, but also for my family. Working conditions affect my entire life, not just the hours when I'm here. Thank you for your consideration and time, and especially the service you provide for the city and citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Very well said, very well spoken. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I'm just taking a genuine. I just, I just want to say, we're at an impasse, but we want to resolve it for both of us. So, with that, thank you very much for being here. Yes?
I just want to say. I'm Keith Cody, I work for the water department, and I agree with, with what Nick said.
Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Diane?
I'm Diane Christensen. I've been with the city since 2005, and I would like to echo what Keith had to say. I enjoy my job, and I'd like to stay here.
You enjoy having it, believe me. But that, you know, that I've got nothing respect, nothing but respect for our city employees, and we want to keep you all as happy and as motivated as we can, and keep you long-term employees. It's best for the city we do that. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please.
Julie Glenn Danning, and I live, I'm a citizen of solving as well as an employee. I would like to address a comment that Fred Koval made, that he's the only one who's here at a council meeting. There's many of us who watch on television, on channel 23, and then look at it as well. So, just because the room isn't packed doesn't mean no one's watching, no one's listening, and no one cares. I go, would like to reiterate and go along with the other comments that were made. We work very hard at the city. We've had turnover in staff, one position was vacant for seven months, we've had another one that's been vacant for several months. And we all pitch in, and we all get the work done. We make the deadlines, we get the information that you need, that citizens of the city need. And I want to know that we are all here united, hoping that you will really take a look at what is presented before you. And as we just lost a councilman who couldn't afford to live in town any longer, it's important to have employees that live here, that are on call, that are part of our community. So, being a part of the city and as well as employees, it's very important. So, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. You know, you're right about, I sit here and I forget those cameras are on, and I forget about that there is a television audience, and I'm concentrating on this. You're absolutely right, we get feedback from the audience frequently.
Not tonight.
I'm sorry.
Not tonight.
The cameras aren't working tonight.
Oh, boy. That's kind of a relief. With that, if there's any other, any, any other comments for the closed session, then we'll go to item eight. Thank you all. You can, you can stay for the evening, we'd love to have you. If you'd like to make comments and other things, or you can, you can leave now, if you want.
You've got to work tomorrow.
Yeah, that's right. Thanks, guys. Great bunch of people. All right, on to item eight.
Item eight is the utility box art program. At the October 26th, 2015 city council meeting, the city council adopted a resolution in support of the utility box art program. The staff went ahead and proceeded with a call for artists to get the wrapping of the utility boxes completed, artists and painting. And we did not have a very successful turnout. We got two applications, so we, and the utility art box committee went back to the drawing board and decided to wrap the two smaller boxes by the visitor's center and the solving shoe store with old historic solving photos. And those boxes turned out very well, and we received a lot of good feedback from those. So we decided to try and keep the ball rolling here and chose some additional artwork by a few other local artists. So these are, are not random. The first step was that the committee did approve John Iwer's painted box at Fifth and Mission Drive. So that would be, that was kind of the landscape theme that we went with. And then the committee chose other artwork for the other boxes, and you have those in your staff report. And at this time, staff is referencing that council approved the proposed artwork and the cost of the program. And I do want to mention that we, in it, in the last week, we have garnered another $800 donation sponsorship for a box, so we're, the number's not quite right. Yeah, correct. So hopefully you can approve that and direct staff to proceed with the application to Caltrans.
Question, do you have a question to the side report?
I have a question. How much does it cost to wrap the boxes with the old photos?
It cost approximately $450.
Each?
Yes.
And how many did we do?
We did two.
There only two of those were wrapped? Oh, there's more than that.
No, we just did the two that we own. We're on by the.
Oh, the two that you own?
Yeah.
Were there, are there others that were wrapped?
No.
Seems like there's more than two.
I assure you, it's only two that we did. We only did two.
The first two left are really deep.
If you walk back and forth, you'll see them twice.
Any other questions? Side report.
What are the options for, because it seems like the pictures that are here are a bit different than the looking in the boxes that are currently wrapped? Is there a comparison?
In compared to the historic photos?
Yeah.
Well, these are on a totally different corridor. We wanted Mission Drive to flow with the same type of landscape theme. Those are, the other two are, are on Copenhagen, and are not really part of the Caltrans application or the, the same streetscape.
So, this coverage, you said this coverage is going to be Mission Drive on these?
This is all the signals that Caltrans controls along Mission. Four signals.
So how many boxes do we have here? It's a little confusing because the, the same thing appears a number of times.
We have four, four boxes.
Four boxes. So we have the one with the, with the oak tree and the pathway, and then we have another one with the oak tree and the pathway. I'm confused.
You have a large box.
There's a large box and a small box, but they both are very similar. Is that correct?
If you're talking about site number two, that does have.
We're not, I mean, don't do, don't do site. I'm looking at John Irving's one that looks like a milk carton. This one.
That's the painted box? So that's the rendering by John Iwerks of his painting? And there are two boxes, so the one side is the large box, and the other side is the small box. Correct.
Okay, now where's this one going? Where's this one going?
That is on location five, on Alamo Pantano.
Okay. And then we have the one with the mountains?
Actually, I'm sorry, that one was location two.
This one's two.
That one was.
And then the mountains?
The mountains are at Alisal and Mission.
They're just a little confusing to.
If you read the application, the release applications, they each come with a picture and a box location.
Correct, but it's all confusing. And then where's this red nail going?
That's going on the very small, narrow, tall box, the controller box, at Alisal and Mission at the suspense guard.
And this will all be painted? All of these are painted?
No, the only painted ones are at the entry down at Fifth Street. Those are the two painted.
Those are the pictures wrapped?
Those are painted, the rest are wrapped photos.
So, oh, now I'm really confused. Okay. These are going to be painted?
That's painted, at Fifth Street and Mission.
And these are going to be wrapped?
Correct.
And this one is going to be painted?
That's a wrap.
That's a wrap. So how does this, how does this go along?
I feel like we need to sell the projector next time.
Yeah, with the scenic, with the scenic. This is not scenic like these. So how does this fit in with the thing that you're trying to?
That has a lot to do with the size and shape of that narrow box. You can't do a photo that's as large as other boxes because the photo wouldn't wrap properly. It can't shrug to the point where it can, it would look realistic. So we thought that that oatmeal would at least have the same character and be able to fit on that box. And it is in a sepia tone, which means it's kind of a brownish tone. But actually, the colors don't come out very well on the prints, but the mountain scene does have a very brownish hue to it.
Okay, then where's this guy going?
That one is at Alamo Pantano.
Has the EAR reviewed any of this?
Can you repeat?
The EAR, have they reviewed any of this?
No.
Or just directly to us?
Council did not direct these to go to Board of Architecture Review. They, we had the utility art box committee approve the artwork and then their recommendation was to come to council.
And do we have any more boxes after these ones?
That's the main ones. Part of the problem is these, with Caltrans, you have to have them all approved at one time, go through their process. There are a multitude of other boxes in town. They're owned by PG&E. Now, they, when we found out we were doing a program like this, were very, very, they really want us to make sure we don't do their boxes without their permission. I don't think they're as big a proponent of this as Caltrans with the public. So that would be the next step, to be looking at those. There are quite a few more smaller boxes throughout the town for cable and PG&E and other type of things.
Okay. Okay, with that, we'll go to the public comments. Fred Kobel?
City council members, mayor, Mayor, Mayor. I live downtown quite a bit. Get my exercise, three miles a day. I strive, strive for it. Minimum. And I look at the art, the current art, and it gives me a real good feeling. It really represents the city. And then I look at the suggested art, although I realize, of course, that there wasn't too people stepping up to the plate. And it just is so contrasting. It's just, it's not even worth considering. So I like to recommend that you stay with the thing of what the existing art is, which is realistic, as opposed to this other kind of art that's, well, they have, the painters have some term for it, but I don't remember what it is. Impressionistic maybe?
Plainer.
What?
Plainer.
Yeah, whatever. Okay.
Thank you, Brett. Tracy Farhod?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Tracy Farhod, Solvain Conference and Visitors Bureau. We actually sponsored one of those utility boxes with the historic photo. We love it. I think it looks fantastic. We get great comments about her. It's a great enhancement to the city. It has changed what was once ugly into what becomes a public art enhancement and a talking piece. It depicts both our beauty, our history, our famous icons. I love the combination of the paintings, the pictures, the historic elements that hint to what we were, but it doesn't try to take the place of our historical, which is where we want to drive people to go see all of those pieces. I thought it was extremely well done. The wrap, the wrap job was amazing, much better than I expected to, how to come out and do all those sides. Also, you've got John Iwer's doing a piece. That should, I don't want to look a gift worse in the mouth. He is one of our most preeminent landscape artists and to be able to have a piece of his little box is a real coup for the city and after one and all for it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no other speakers left. Does anyone else wish to comment on this paper? Item. Sitting on, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Who would like to start? So Tracy, who were the artists? Was it John?
Yeah, I like the idea of having some color, but I really also like what we have now. So. I think it would be cool to have.
I just love an old email that I got on February 23 this year from Brad. It included a couple of these, example, these boxes. And I responded very quickly and I said, "These are awesome. When do we get more?" I love this whole concept. I think even what's presented here is great, but I really fall in love with those historic solving photos. And if we wrap them, I'm now hearing that we don't have to pay the ongoing maintenance cost. And we're struggling to control costs right now. I don't know if I really want to add more things that require more maintenance on a year basis.
My comment would be to keep in mind that the wraps only last eight to nine years and then we would have another $800 to $1,000 to rewrap them or remove the wraps and go a different route. So then it was a time-consuming process to find those two photos. They have to be a certain, a certain dimension. There's also not that many historic photos out there that actually capture kind of the essence that you want. There's a lot of old tan photos there. I just don't know that they're going to be as, have as much interest. I don't know how to say it, but it was hard to find photos that would work and would grasp people's attention.
I fall in love when Jason, you're shining off their great hair.
Well, I think, I think there are many photos that were in their calendar that were worthy of being wrapped.
Right.
So how many do, how many do we have now? We have two?
Two.
Well, two out of 10, two out of 12. We have 10 more that we could consider. Because those photos are great. I mean, they're just the essence of solving long ago.
We should preserve that.
Yeah. But I.
I like the idea of color, even if it's just at the entrance and exit of kind of town on Mission Drive, if that matters to anybody. But I like the idea of having some kind of life at the entrance and then, and I like the subtlety of what we have now, kind of in town. So.
I agree. Neil, I agree with you.
My opinion is that we've got to remember those small boxes are about a foot square or less, so they have to take those wraps. I support this thing 100%. I think that we need more, more public art in the city. It really benefits the city. And if, and it was mentioned that this had to be approved by Caltrans, being it's on a state highway. So if we don't do it tonight, then we go through the process all over again. I think that we have other boxes within the city off of the state highway that we could investigate the possibility of having old art, old photographs wrapped. But in this case, I think we ought to go with this, with what the art committee has done.
Is that true? We have to start the process again?
This, where you're at right now is this is what we will submit to Caltrans. So I mean, it's been a long process and we started with, the intent was to have artists do all of them. And the process, I think, as Lisa said, was started in 2015. So I think last year I just said, "You know what? Let's just, the two we own, let's just get some off."
So the only real delay is just.
Yeah, we could easily start over. We have yet to submit to Caltrans. That's what we were going to do with the results of this meeting tonight.
And what about some kind of blend of focusing on more of the historical black and whites and then a couple colorful ones?
This is your recommendation from the subcommittee that was created. So if you guys want to change it, they, they said they present this to the council, you have that option, so.
I'd make the motion that we accept the artwork and installation and go ahead with the. Is there a second?
I'll make a substitute motion. Sorry, substitute motion. Would this get a second on this first?
No, maybe a second.
No second?
You just said.
Motion died for lack of a second. So are there any other motions? So I'll make the motion to have staff pursue more historical solving photos and maybe investigate the option of two colorful ones, some kind of idea like what Neil had, with the, maybe colorful one at the entrance and one at the exit.
Are you approving the John Iwer's application?
Yeah, what exactly, what are, what are the two entries? What are the two?
This one and this one. That's down there. That's why we.
So approve those and then the rest investigate the historical.
So when you say the, is it Alamo Pantano is the other entry or is it Alisal the other entry?
This is the other. That's the Alisal Mission, right?
Just so we get clarification.
No, no.
That's Alisal.
No, no, this is Alamo Pantano.
No, that's not Alamo.
Oh, and is it the dark one there, Stan?
Yes. The actual photo is not that dark.
This is related.
Okay, one, okay. This will kind of settle it for me. The total cost is 3,800. Is that what we're working at? Of course, for the whole project, given that it's presented?
Total cost is 3,000.
So donations, we bring it down to 3,000. So we have 2,000 donations and the total cost is 3,000.
Correct.
I'll make the motion that we go ahead and before with it. Wait, there's been, there's one motion. First, I got a motion on the table. So you'd only need the color of the front and. Well, I mean, I was trying to craft the motion to. I was trying to craft it to blend some more of the historical, but then taking consideration that you wanted some color. All right. Where that is, if that's, I guess I'd need that from you.
I will say that your motion sounded like Jim's motion. So if one of you just could.
My motion was to accept the project as is.
So that means putting color at Alisal and Mission. At the entrance, that one down there and at the entrance down there. And then hopefully we can get some of the historical pictures around the city where there are other boxes.
Just keep, just keep Mission Drive, this presentation, and then go back to the art committee and ask them to develop the photographs for the other boxes within the city on Copenhagen and other streets.
Is there a motion on the board?
Yeah, a motion. Well, actually, Ryan had started the motion. It didn't have a second yet, so I'm going to call that die for lack of a second. Then Neil came up with another one, which was similar to mine. Okay, then I'll second that motion.
And that's using all the photographs we have here.
That's doing this project as presented. And then we'll also request the art committee to go back and look at photographs.
Second motion. Let's do a second. No, let's do a second motion.
Do a second motion?
Yeah.
So the motion will be the project as presented here. It's been moved to the second. We call the rule, please.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Jameson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. And then, so then we can craft another motion to take it back to the art committee to consider photographs on the other boxes, historical photographs near the boxes in town. That's the motion I'll second.
Just, just so you know, we do not own those. Caltrans doesn't own those, so we will need to contact utilities to see if we can do that. But you'd like us to pursue, you know, one side and those other.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Now the rule call.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Jameson?
Yes.
Now, seeing that this art program needs some sponsors, I will pledge $500 toward the art project. I'll match up. Hey, yo, I'll throw down that. I was going to do the $800, but somebody grabbed that away, so.
You got that? Three donations tonight.
We're down to 200, 2,000 dollars. Anyway, let's keep the donations going. How many?
Anybody out there?
Man.
You know, Jim's paycheck is worth a little bit more. I'm getting my paycheck, you know? I'll get two paychecks.
I'm keeping it attached, but giving the.
Buy you breakfast and you'll go make $500?
Yeah. You see it?
I'll do that.
No, he just wants you to buy him breakfast.
Okay. Are we done with this item? You and I are kicking in. Good. Okay.
Item nine, parking lot four, proposed tour bus parking.
Neil's doing it too?
Yeah.
Fantastic. That's what that meant.
1,500 bucks.
All right. On item nine.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Richardson and council members. Matt Ben, your Public Works Director and City Engineer. So currently, as I'm sure you're aware, the tour bus is in town parked primarily in the private parking lot behind the Tower Pizza location. They access that with, through that alley by the post office. And so a few months back, the Solvain Commissions and Visitors Bureau contacted city staff, requested a field meeting or a meeting to look at possible options for providing tour buses, some modest tour bus parking towards the middle of town and in particular parking lot four or in that general area. So they followed that up with a letter to the mayor and also to the city council. And also we received a letter requesting.
I'm getting my paycheck in, you know? I'll get two paychecks, I tell you.
I'm keeping it attached, but giving the... Buy you breakfast and you'll go make five hundred dollars?
Yep.
I'll do that.
No, he just wants you to buy him breakfast.
Okay, oh, we're done with this item? You and I are kicking in five hundred? Good. Okay, I'll die in nine.
Item nine, parking lot four, proposed tour bus parking.
You're kicking into it?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Really, that's what that meant.
Fifteen hundred bucks.
All right, I'll die in nine.
All right, good, good evening, Mayor Richardson and Councilmembers. Matt Ben, your Public Works Director and City Engineer. So, currently, as I'm sure you're aware, uh, the tour buses in town park primarily in the private parking lot behind the Tower Pizza location. They access that, uh, with, through that alley by the post office. And, um, uh, so, so a few months back, the Solvang Commiss and Visitors Bureau contacted city staff, requested a field meeting or a meeting to, to look at possible, um, options for, uh, providing tour buses, some, some modest tour, tour bus parking towards the middle of town and in, uh, particular parking lot four or, or in that general area. Uh, so they followed that up with a letter to the, to the mayor and also to the city council. And also we received a, a letter requesting tour bus parking in the middle of town from the, um, Solvang Chamber of Commerce. So, staff did some additional investigation and took some measurements and did a little bit of research on bus, uh, tour bus dimensions and came up with two possible options, um, which are shown here in this exhibit. Uh, staff recommends providing a maximum of only two tour bus parking spaces. Right now, option one, on the street. Uh, with that option, it would take up four, uh, on-street parking spaces. Uh, option two, in the parking lot, with the diagonal, the two diagonal spaces would take up nine parking spaces. And, um, uh, the other thing to consider is that, uh, providing tour buses parking, uh, in this part of town, either along Oak or, or Lot Four, would result in, um, tour buses traveling down, uh, this residential street, Oak Street. So, uh, we do have delivery trucks and other, you know, trash trucks and things. So, there are some kind of industrial or commercial vehicles that go Oak Street. It is, it is one of the city's more major collectors, uh, but, um, collector roads. But, uh, you know, that is something to consider, that you have these tour buses on these residential streets. And, um, so as far as fiscal impact, uh, either option, staff could do, uh, the public works staff could do the restructuring work necessary, so just minimal cost, uh, to do it. Another thing I wanted to mention is, we, we did think about, uh, other loca, possible locations, but these, these two options seemed, uh, really the best available ones. And, um, uh, just staff kind of prefers, uh, on-street only because we're losing less parking spaces and it won't require the tour buses going through the parking lot along with, just for the vehicles, um, and having to maneuver through the parking lot and, and exit through the alley. So, but, um, but we don't have, we don't have, uh, a recommendation as far as options. We're leaving that to the city council to discuss and provide staff with direction. And so that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there any questions for staff?
Yeah. Yomi's talked about using the school. Am I on the right track here? Like, what, what, why not use the school?
Uh, well, the city manager has, I believe, coordinated with the school for, uh, additional tourist parking. But, uh, I don't think those discussions involve tour, tour buses, uh, going in and out of there. Also, um, I'm trying to remember if it's Fur or Elm, but, um, that street's pretty narrow and to try to get, um, tour buses there with parking on both sides, you know, the residents parking on both sides of the street, uh, would be pretty congested, a lot more, well, more congested than Oak Street.
You really think it'd be less congested than Oak Street? There's a lot, there's a parking lot right here on Oak Street and then what goes on on Oak Street? It's not like there's no one that's driving on Oak Street.
Oh, it's very busy, yeah, it's very...
Yeah, it's very busy, it's very busy street.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a slightly wider, um, street with curb, curb to curb, just a few feet wider, but...
Can you tell me how they're going to go in and how they're going to go out?
Of the parking lot or just? Yeah, so basically, the entrance, they would go, uh, into the parking lot, uh, at the entrance just above where it says Oak Street on the, on the exhibit. Uh, that's, that's the westerly, um, entrance and they... Oh.
My batteries are dead, I can't, oh, no, here we go.
Uh, so the buses would enter here, pull into the stalls, and then exit right here and exit out, out the alleyway here.
You know, tight spaces down there at the bottom of that alleyway when you come onto Oak Street?
Oh, yeah.
That is a nightmare.
Yeah, well, the, uh...
That is not a good plan.
We have to swing away from that.
The, the trash trucks do, um, access, uh, and use this alley, so they're big and tall and, um... Yeah, we're not suggesting this is like a great plan. This is really the best two options that we could come up with, so. And we're happy to investigate other things if you'd like.
Well, it's the availability, so you see the option one that you have marked here.
Um, yeah, option one would be two buses.
So, what about outside the annex building, underneath those two trees?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would work also. Uh, one of the trees there is dying and is likely going to need to be removed. The other one, we'd have to do some kind of heavy pruning, uh, because the branches, uh, are high enough where vehicles can go park along there, no problem. But my office is right over there and I see, um, cars, or the, yeah, the motorhomes and stuff. When they try to park there, they're always like getting out and looking at that and, um, but...
So, it's already a problem because it's causing a spectacle on the, on the street, just to park there, right?
But that is, that is an option, act, you know, so right along here.
Yeah, there's, there's residential, I mean, I don't know, I don't, you gotta think of something else. There, there are kids that, that ride their bikes and play right, right there in that zone. And it's like, what about Bets Hall?
Yeah, we do, we do have, um, we do have parking, uh, there for buses and RVs. A diagonal parking just like this, so they would fit there. But the, the goal of their request is to, um, bring tourists to the middle part of town. And the thinking is that if the parking was in this area, the, um, the tourists, uh, would come right through this corridor here or this way out to Copenhagen. So, there's basically two ways to, to lead out. This kind of goes right up towards Attledag here and this is just to the west of Attledag, uh, kind of by the, um, Petros, uh...
And for, for option number one, I'm going to call it option number three, the area in front of the annex.
Okay.
Um, across the street, can you just tell me what these properties are?
How's this?
Uh, this, this right here is the vacant lot.
Vacant lot?
Yeah.
Which you're looking at potentially in something with, and then you got...
Yeah, these are single-family homes.
Okay, single-family.
And then there's a, a business here, the two-story office building. And then to the west of that is another, uh, commercial, uh, building.
Yeah, the old dump.
Yeah, and then beyond that, it's all, there's condominiums and apartments.
Well, my, my question is, is we're in negotiation to consider the purchase of that vacant corner lot.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, would that be an acceptable alternative to park a couple of buses?
Sure.
If we, if we, if we acquired that...
Sure, sure. I, I think, uh, you know, again, their goal was to try to get the, the, the tourists as close to coming out here near Attledag. Uh, I think if they, if you had tourists park here, they would go up Second Street, which, um, you know, is closer to the center of town. So, we were trying to, trying to accommodate what their, their goal was.
Sort of walk up to the overway from there also.
Yeah, but certainly, certainly that would work. We could, that could be used or along the, or along the curb on, on both fronts.
Yeah, I see an entrance, I see an entrance where the current entrance is and then having an exit at, in front of the fire station. We will handle there.
Well, the preliminary site plan we, um, developed only has one driveway, which is across from the, um, fire department driveway. Uh, if you have two driveways, that takes up a lot more space, um, you know, for that other, that second exit. So, you, you, you can gain about three or four additional parking spaces if you just have one wider entrance and it loops around and, and so they enter and exit the same driveway.
Well, considering the home and storage area, that's what it is also. And, uh, would it, would it be, uh, efficient or economic to put the bus, two or three or four buses in that lot along with the home and the party?
And that would be a building advice, and that would be a building advice for the home.
Yeah, so our, our preliminary site plan for the vacant lot here, uh, provides space along the, um, the south side of that lot, so that, that far, that side, if you, you know, uh, um... So, there's space for three, uh, the two honins and the horse, the two, they have two different, like, honin vehicles and then a horse trailer. So, it'd be space for three of those, uh, pieces of equipment. Uh, and then, I forget off the top of my head how many cars, but something like thirty or so, uh, cars. And so, but it, it could be developed though where, so the driveway would be moved here. So, this driveway here would go away, you could park a tour bus here and on this side.
On the street or...
On the street, yeah. Which is actually, I think, uh...
How would that conflict with the fire engine going out?
Uh, no, they, they, they gotta...
The big engine.
Yeah, they have a, well, we have to look at that because we have to look at the term, uh, they, that's what they say.
They want that already, they want that already, so.
Um, are there any other comments? Then let's take it to the Public for Public comment, Tracy Farah.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. Um, solving CBB, uh, first of all, just thank you for being willing to consider an alternate or an additional bus parking spot. Uh, we've also been hearing, um, from both residents who have found complaints about not being able to get to the home on Saturdays, somehow crowded it is, um, or being worried about that, as well as from businesses who have expressed concern that, um, large groups of, um, tour bus, um, attendees don't get past the first block, um, which is why even the Copenhagen house ended up putting windows in that corner so they'd at least know there was something further past. So, it's helping to at least share the wealth in the rest of the whole town as opposed to it being, um, centered at one end. Also because in years past, um, we've had far more than just fifteen buses there at any time, especially during the summer, and they're crowded and they take up spot, uh, spaces. So, again, thank you for being willing to consider an alternate. We just want the best solution for the city and for the residents and for the people who are coming. But we'll be here to help support with large, um, obviously it's going to take a little time to get the word out to the tour bus companies. We don't have access to all of the companies that are hiring the charter buses. There are like three different levels of people that you talk to, but we're there for that. We're there for education, we'll also be there to help for any signage. And just in considering that, um, they do need to know where to go when they get out and be able to find it in order to come back. Um, I know there was some thought at the last, previous meeting that we were asking to remove it from, uh, next to the Mission and behind the, um, post office, et cetera. We don't want to remove it completely, we just want to help, um, have some additional spaces for when that overcrowding occurs. So, that would take some time to get to that message and yes, we preferred option two only because it got you closer to true entry into other shops and restaurants, dining. That'll make it easier for a group signage. Um, uh, but, uh, we're also working on, um, other tours and options that can get people just straight up the street and down. It's hard for people to go more than a block sometimes. We actually have folks who say, I don't want to go past the parking lot and get near this restaurant. So, that's just been part of our, um, our concerns on that. So, again, thank you and for access and encouraging the retail and the restaurant patronage, um, past the east side of town. I think it's going to be very beneficial, whichever becomes the best solution, so thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Greg Goble?
Greg Goble, solving, Mayor and city council members. There's no question about it that you are hard pressed for additional parking. Now, you can, you've danced around a distributed parking possibility. And why not expand on that? You've talked about the Vets parking area, maybe for a couple. You've talked about the long side of the annex, maybe four there, if you pick some there. I don't think anything in front of the fire station, that's a disaster waiting to happen. But there's other locations too. You certainly don't want something in the residential elementary school area, even though it looks feasible. Well, you've got to think about the residents there too. Uh, but where else could you pick some spots? Well, take a look at between the succulent and the bank. I forget what name that street is, if that's third place or whatever it is. You could put one in there, the, the motel is on the right-hand side, I'm up there, a couple of spots there. But you could go over, uh, down where the, uh, uh, where you now have the current spot for the Homer in front of their restaurant, which is... Yeah, the Little Mermaid, you know, you could, there's, maybe put a bus there. So, you could start scattering buses around the town. Just do a walk and see, just see what are all the other possibilities. You don't have to do but maybe one bus here, one bus there, maybe two buses here, maybe two at the Vets Hall. So, that's a strong possibility. But let's look what you're facing into, and these were the days of the early nineties. What used to happen in the access there? Between, uh, Homberg's, Paul Homberg's and the post office? That had to be blocked off one day a year because it's owned by the Mission. And if you look at the entranceway there, right in the center, right as you cross over the threshold of the sidewalk, you'll see a brass plaque and it says, "We reserve the right," and it goes on for access. During Bill Warburg's days, got a little, he used to, once a year, he would block it off. Nobody was allowed in there, including the buses. There was also a period of time where it got chained. And it was, there was, uh, posts put in, the chains. And it made it impossible and difficult to go there. The point is, they could take, they could take that away anytime they want and not allow any more buses to go back. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak, Dave?
Just something I've been thinking about for a while. And I honestly don't know where we put it, but maybe it's time to think about some remote parking and some shuttle buses into town. Leave the big buses outside of town and shuttle people in and there could be different drop-off spaces around the village so we could spread the tourists out. It's just a thought, but maybe sometime in the future, maybe if we can annex more land just outside of the city, we could have a bus parking lot somewhere with some shuttles direct into the village.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Seeing now, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Who'd like to start?
I like a diversified approach. I also don't, uh, want things to get too scattered because I kind of start seeing maybe a managerial problem there with that. Um, it, it's tough to put a bus in front of a residence. Um, so I kind of like what I was referring to as option three. I don't know if you put one bus on option three in front of the, uh, the vacant lot that's there now and one bus, uh, to the most front portion of the option and, and a couple over in Bets Hall. Get you back for a few months and, and see how those work out for us.
I want to know how we're going to manage this. How are we going to get the bus drivers to go to site A, site B, site Z, whatever?
I want to ask Tracy that question. Could you enlighten us as to how you control the bus companies to where they would park them?
That'd be really hard, um, just honestly. It's, um, I mean, they've been coming for decades to one particular spot. So, I mean, it's going to take me a year just to get to them and show maps and try to train them and, and you even have to have people then downstairs, right there, that when the fifteen spots are full so that you can actually, you know, you, it'll take them to just assign because they've been coming to the same location. But to spread them out all over town, it's, they usually come to one spot. That way they know where they come and where to go because of having the whole groups. It'd be really very hard to show faces around town.
So, the idea is to convince the bus companies that if we put them, for example, in parking lot four, that all the bus companies got to know that's available?
Yes.
And that, that they would go there if there was, if it was, the other parking area was full?
How would they know that?
Or they don't have to wait till it's full, they just would have two options. So, you basically say there are, there's more than one option for where to park in town.
If one's full, you move to the next.
Well, this parking lot here is pretty full most of the time. And then you have the transit also that's in and out of there. There's a couple of transit buses there most of the time. Well, that's the same, I think, in the...
It's also not very easy at all to pull in and back up into the current spots. And we also have to thank the hotel court for allowing the gates to be open for the, those buses to be able to be, to do that, to pull around. So, it wouldn't happen overnight, definitely not, but, um, I think you could eventually show that, um, you have mult, you know, but I, I wouldn't do more than, the Vets Hall does not help to have on that side and... But I, I wouldn't do more than, the vets' hall does not help to have on that side and, and come in. I know you have that for RV parking right now, um, to even get to train people to go there. It'll, it'll take a while, but I think it would also really help to show people that there's another way, um, to get into a particular part of town. If you start to disseminate it to all different locations, um, it, it just makes it harder to manage.
Well, is there another word on the bank on Alisong Mission Drive? What's the deal with that? The thing, so what is...
It's rented.
The lot, the bar plus rented?
Somebody has an option on developing that property.
Oh, okay.
And it's not, not tour bus parking.
But can, can we drop them somewhere on a street and then the bus go park?
No, there's a problem with, um, dropping and them picking up because, um, you just don't remember where you've been and how to get anywhere. So, if they, the bus drivers, when they come, they literally open the door and let them out. Um, there is nobody there that walks them to any particular spot. So, um, they would have, that's why they need to have maps at both, at different locations so they can find their way back.
It's my understanding that that lot is a privately unlocked for the buses parked now?
Yeah, it's about three different privately unlocked.
Okay, and it's the lot. You were talking about the access where they, the mission we used to go on. I, I remember that. Yeah, okay.
So, ju, just a question. So, let's just say we chose option one. What, uh, this just relates back to managing where these buses park. Does that mean that we didn't lose those two spots permanently 'cause we're gonna have them blocked off so that they're always available for...
Yes, they'd be signed for bus parking, so you would lose them for any other time.
About putting them at the entranceway, they should go in instead of making them go to the right, have them go straight ahead and park along where those parallel parking ends, but have them park against the...
The west, the west edge of the, um, of this parking lot is private property.
No, I'm talking about the whole west edge?
Thank you. So, the property line runs kinda along this island right here.
Okay.
So, this sort of wedge-shaped area, that's all private property.
Do, do we have, do we have easement or access or do we maintain that private property?
Yeah, the city does maintain that. Uh, somewhere in the, in the past, there was, I guess, I, I really don't know the details as long before I started working here, but there was some agreement made, uh, where this, um, can be, uh, was combined to be one big parking lot. And the city does, uh, slay to sale and strip this area as, when it does the rest of it. So, it's all maintained as one parking lot, but, but this part is all private property here.
Do, do we have a permit of easement?
I, I, I don't know that, so I'm sorry.
Did they shut us off?
You sure we don't have that lot?
Not to digress, but...
Uh, at least, I'm pretty sure. I think we own that lot.
Okay.
I think, I think that we need to put some more thought into it personally.
Sure.
Not make a decision tonight, but...
Yeah, staff, just, staff brought this before you because the, both the chamber and the CBB requested that an item be come before you. So, yeah, staff's not, uh...
I like the idea of, like, being in the center of town, but I think we just gotta put a little bit more thought into how we wanna... I think it's a great idea. It's just got some challenges.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with that. It's just that the way to handle the buses is to come in and who knows where to go and that sort of thing. And, and during the education process, we lose parking on the street because it's reserved for buses that may not show up for days at a time.
That, that recycling, uh, center that's there behind the annex, yeah.
What's it in front of?
Uh, this is a, this is a little, um, uh, shop area for the maintenance division. Um, we store all the, um, what we store, the, that right there is the boom for, um, uh, replacing the highway banner with the boom lift. Uh, so that's parked right there. So, here's the trash bins. That's the part of the boom lift. Uh, these two sheds here house all of our traffic cones and traffic barricades and traffic control devices.
I'm just curious if there's any merit in that and then having the buses pull right in that way.
Well, we do, we do have a problem in our ten-year capital, uh, plan to look at reconfiguring the whole area and reconstructing the shop 'cause this shop is pretty old and, um, kinda beaten up pretty bad over the years. Uh, it ac, exact, it actually was like just a garage that, um, wasn't, uh, finished. And we kinda upgraded it and converted it into the maintenance shop. But anyway, there is a project in the tenure plan to look at reconfiguring this whole area, but, um...
Is, is, is the shop there for a specific reason, like, like location-wise, it benefits in some way or...
Uh, no, no, that just happened to be where the historic garage was located. So, that's, yeah, i, i, it could be relocated or...
So, we can actually redesign this lot over here, bring in more parking, and then put the buses there?
That would be an option.
Losing any parking, we're gonna add more parking, so we can reduce traffic on Alisong. And we still do have those buses going in. Now they're with the fire there at home. Well, the fire park's still, still option one or option... But they would be clean.
Yeah, we, we still need to provide somewhere for, for, you know, everything that, that the shop currently can plus this area.
Is that something that you guys could think about and come back with a report on?
Uh, sure. I mean, but, you know, we, we had some, I, we bring some, some ideas when we put the project on the ten-year, um, capital plan, but it's not actually, uh, scheduled to come up for, you know, five years and out. But, um, but...
Yeah, there'd be quite an expense to, you don't get all that. So, you'd have to do the benefit cost to provide bus parking versus what it's gonna capital cost for you to move all that.
Okay, then, uh, shall we table this for further, uh, discussion and reporting or study?
Okay, so when you say table, do you'd like us to, sorry, just some, uh, a few other ideas? Okay, are there any specific locations you'd like us to look at?
Well, the parking lot for one, the, the, the one we may acquire, that corner of Oak and...
Oh, sure, okay, yeah.
Real quick question.
Yeah, that was...
What's the price for parking space right now roughly on, like...
Truck?
Yeah, or, yeah, like for parking in Lou, when we do that whole thing, it's like eleven thousand dollars.
You park it in Lou is, uh, twelve, four. Twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-six.
And we're looking at four spaces here? Is that four spaces roughly or...
Six, I think you was losing six on the, in the whole lot.
Well, here, that would take up four parking spaces for, you know, standard vehicles and nine parking spaces plus the parking lot. So, four or nine.
That's a good deal breaker.
Yeah, the, yeah, that's why, you know, staff was figuring that on-street parking somewhere. And it's also easier for the buses to pull in and out, you know, not have to pull into a parking lot and all the tight maneuvering and all that. Um, but definitely along here, uh, where council member Tucson, uh, sorry.
I got Tucson, your office.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, doesn't bother me.
He can sell bottle of water.
I would top date to jump on the bus.
So, uh...
It would always be a Monday.
So, on both sides of Oak Street, uh, lots of the street, you know, along the vacant, the currently vacant lot there, those are all good. We can bring some exhibits and check the dimensions.
Look at all that.
Put, put a sketch together, something together to include that area.
Okay, if I lived in one of those little houses, I would not like that at all.
Yeah, that, that'd just be a...
I don't think it's a good place at all.
No, that, that's fine. I mean, you know, it's...
Okay, so we'll table that and potentially as we move forward, if we do get the lot and move forward on that, that may be a place for, for the buses.
But we have other options. Buy a whole block.
Well, I'm hearing on-street. I'm hearing no-on-street. I'm, I'm, there's other options unless I got a majority in there.
See if that, that, uh, area can be reconfigured. It's already on the tenure.
Oh, the maintenance yard?
Right.
Yeah, yeah. That would be in one of the evaluations we brought out.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda. Uh, we deleted item ten, which was based on the front porch, which was to the owner. We'll go to item eleven with the council reports. Now, last, last meeting, I said I was unprepared. And I was unprepared for a reason because I had already made that presentation meeting before. But because I had, I made that presentation about the meeting that we cashed on the, uh, I believe the seventeenth of, uh, August. It was just in front of the meeting we had on the fall of Monday. But, but goodness gracious, when we, we had a special, uh, Air Force Control District meeting just the other day, so... And it was out of sequence. It was on the set. And, and what we did was, uh, we had a closed session item regarding the executive director's pay. And we, uh, voted to pay her, uh, uh, a pay giver a pay raise. We took it out to the public and grant her that pay raise and adjourned the meeting. So, there we go. That was ABCD.
Okay, I have my library. Or you had some more? You have more? Okay. Some committee got together and they would, they'd give the hundred and eighty thousand dollars that the, um, order supervisor was going to give to the libraries that needed it. The city of Solvang got thirteen thousand dollars, a hundred and eighty thousand. And Santa Barbara Central will be taking thirteen point five percent to administrate the, out of that thirteen. They also told us how we could spend the money. We understood that it was going to be used for things already in existence to help us meet some of the gaps that some of the libraries have in their finances. But this committee told us how we are going to spend that money. So, we're going to have an automatic checkout service. And that's where the money, most of the money's going to go, about eight thousand dollars of it.
How, how much do you go built them?
Five thousand dollars.
They got five? They got thirteen?
I don't think, you got less than you get subtracted, thirteen and a half percent.
Well, they have thirteen and a half percent that comes out of theirs too.
But we have to give that too.
Oh, yeah.
But we didn't get thirteen.
No, no, we did. According to them, we did.
Of course.
Of course.
Government accounting.
Right. And then they also, um, the committee to select a consultant has met. And they, um, reviewed the various, um, companies that provided their, uh, RFPs.
Yeah, I think they actually, I think they actually did an RFP and they had, uh, three or four proposals.
Right, and they chose two of those, um, to actually interview. So, they're going to be interviewing two of these companies. People see what they designed that we should be doing with the library.
Are there any other committee reports? Hearing none? We go to the closed session. Please read the closed session item.
Item thirteen, closed session. Government Code Section five four nine five point six, Conference with Labor Negotiators. Agency representatives Brad Byro, city manager, and Dave Fleishman, Assistant City Attorney, Employee Organization Team, just local nine eight six.
We're adjourned to closed session.